Good evening. It is 6:30. I will call this meeting to order. If the secretary will call the roll, please.
Kenny Kofelt.
Here.
Scott Gardner.
Here.
Matthew Heron.
Here.
Sam Kimpton.
Here.
Michael Stees.
Here.
Barbara Schrader is here. Diana Nichols.
Here. If you will now, please rise and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Mr. Hieronymus?
Yeah, I'm gonna stand right here. I don't think I need a microphone. If I do, let me know. But I wanted to introduce, we have some best graders here tonight. At the middle school this year, we kind of changed the schedule around. We have a RTI time, a response intervention. So our kids that struggle in math or ELA that are at a grade level get some interventions and one-on-one budget time. And we also have some students that are on grade level in math and ELA or above. So for those students, what we call the enrichment, they got four options. They can use a Viper art. We decided to have for our kids. We also have some fitness programs because it's really important. We're excited to do that. We also have a book club, and we have plenty of kids who live in the well. And then another option was a strands option this year at the middle school. So that's, these kids get to meet every day, Monday through Friday, with Mr. Stone. I had an idea, and I gave Mr. Stone last summer, said, here, here's my idea. And Mr. Stone, the guy in the blanket, said, absolutely, I'd love to do that. So it's a way for us at the middle school to introduce our kids, some of the kids that want to use some strings instruments. We have some violas, and we have some other things. So this group, what amazing group. Mr. Stone was ill a few weeks ago, so I jumped in during Tiger time, and they taught me a lot in about 35 minutes. About this and the B, they were plucking with their fingers. We didn't have our bows in yet. Everybody knows how the supply chain is lately. So in a short amount of time, these young people got their bows in, and I'm very excited to isolate and play for the board. I'm gonna give a shout out to the parents. Thank you so much for bringing them up tonight. They're doing a great job. Mr. Stone.
Hello, this is Ryan Stone. I'm very glad to have these group of kids. This is the best group of kids I've ever worked with. They've only been playing for a month. Let's keep that in mind as they're getting ready to play. They're gonna blow you guys away. So we're gonna start with good team. The one more thing you guys is wish you guys a happy and merry Christmas.
We wish you a merry Christmas. We wish you a merry Christmas. We wish you a merry Christmas and a happy new year. Good tidings we bring to you and your dear. Good tidings for Christmas and a happy new year. We wish you a merry Christmas. We wish you a merry Christmas. We wish you a merry Christmas and a happy new year. Merry Christmas.
Thank you so much. Thank you. That was good. We'll give my man out of here. Okay. We will continue now to the public and staff comments, recognitions, and presentations as well. I'd like to remind everyone that anyone from the audience who would like to address the board may do so when that agenda item is introduced. You can approach the podium. We do have a sign-up sheet at Mr. Satin's table, just so we can get names correct for a minute. If you will do that, and then approach the podium. And you will need to also provide your name, and you'll have three minutes to speak. Sedalia School District Foundation.
I'm here.
I see you.
Here I am. But I come bearing gifts.
All right.
For the staff. So we had asked the staff to select projects of their choice, or administrators' projects of their choice for the Brendan Eisenminger Student Impact Fund. As you might remember, this is our second year of fund distributions from that fund, and it's to help students in the Sedalia 200 School District by the choosing of the administrator. So can I have Horseman, Heber Hunt, Parkview, the Loftus Childhood Center, Skyline, the Middle School, Junior High, Whittier, and Smith Cotton? Basically, Lisa, everybody but you. And Lisa's not included because her community has taken care of Washington so well. She asked for funds not to be distributed to Washington. So that's why we didn't leave her out on purpose or anything.
We also have a couple that are unavailable to be here tonight.
Okay, all right. So from, for Horseman Elementary School, they're gonna use this for hygiene kits and clothing for individual students, and they've been awarded, where is Horseman? $500. And you're not gonna get your check tonight, but I'm gonna give you your award. I'm gonna tell you what you get, and then we'll give you your check, so. Heber Hunt, private support for individual students. They're gonna receive $250. Parkview Elementary, holiday gifts and clothing for individual students, $500. Loftus is $500 as well for the same supplemental for Christmas and individual student needs. Skyline, the same, $500 supplemental for Christmas and basic student needs. The Middle School is receiving $800 for some hygiene kits and clothing for individual students. The Smith Cotton Junior High is receiving $800 for private support of individual students and the purchase of some bicycles. The Smith Cotton High School is receiving $950 for food, basic needs for students, and private support for individual students' needs. And Whittier High School is receiving $1,500 for food assistance for students during the holidays. So the fund is distributing $6,300 this year for the individual needs of students in our district, and I think that's a lot to be proud of, so. So we'll get the checks to you as soon as we can. But Bob, can you take a group picture for us?
Thank you to the foundation. Deidre, we appreciate that.
No, the foundation is with the catalyst. This is a fund that, you know, most of you know, started, started by Mr. Eisenminger with his generosity and found out his own topic, so.
This is wonderful in his memory. We appreciate that.
Thank you.
Of course, that's my favorite part of the year. This and scholarships, my two favorite parts, when I get to hand out money. Oh, and mini-grants, too. Really, I just like handing out other people's money. I think that's it.
You do it well.
I think that's all my favorite part, just to hand out money, so. Anyway, we have another little pocket of money we're gonna be talking about on Wednesday before our regular meeting. And we've got some good things happening within the foundation, and I think we're gonna be able to make quite the impact in 2022. So we're looking forward to being able to announce some, some great things coming out of the foundation.
Thank you.
Thanks.
SCEA.
Good evening. Five members from SCA recently attended the MSTAA Convention Assembly of Delegates. The Assembly of Delegates is the legislative body of the Missouri State Teachers Association. It is a forum for free and open discussion of issues facing the education profession. Today, we just had an SCA meeting before I came here. We voted on the winners of the staff scholarships who received the $250. It was very difficult because we had 28 staff members that applied for that, that are continuing their degree. SCA will be recognizing these six winners at the January board meeting. SCA wanted to be sure and let you know that the extra two days for Thanksgiving break was greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do I hear a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
If there are no changes or additions, we will approve the agenda. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Next are the consent agenda items, 5.1 to 5.5. You have that. Do you, does anyone have any comments or objections to the consent agenda? If not, I'll ask for a motion to approve.
So moved.
In a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
5.6, payment of bills. Kofelt. Mr. Kofelt will abstain from this item. Do I hear a motion to accept?
So moved.
In a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
5.7, payment of bills. Mr. Gardner will abstain from this item. Do I hear a motion to accept?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And payment of bills. Mr. Kimpton will abstain from this item. Do I hear a motion to accept? 5.8.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And payment of bills. Ms. Rader will abstain from this item. Do I hear a motion to accept?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We will now move to unfinished business for decisions. Mr. Curry.
Yes.
There you are.
Am I working?
Are you on?
Yeah. Bringing back the Tiger Legacy Scholarship again. I did get some good feedback from our administrative group. They are all quite interested in being part of the committee that evaluates the candidates coming out of our high schools. So there, I think it would be a good asset to joining our group, widening it, giving them the opportunity to visit and speak with our candidates that are interested in the scholarship, letting them know just a little bit more information about each grade level and what those, what those look like. These kids have, again, all been exposed and had the experience of being out in our schools and doing some observations, so allowing them to hear feedback from our administrators, and then also giving our administrators a good idea of who's gonna be coming out of this program after, you know, hopefully four years, and we're gonna welcome back into our district. So give them a little precursor to what to expect and maybe what the best placement will be for those individuals. So again, what we're looking to get the board's approval on is the updated contract, which, again, has that repayment schedule. I did look at adding a caveat of when that would begin. It was recommended in a subsection that we begin that within 60 days of them opting out of. So I included that, if, again, if that's, sounds feasible. I know we're talking about college-age kids, but typically, there's some reason or another that they've elected, whether it's a change in major or, you know, in our most recent issue, just a change in, in career paths, that somebody began work immediately. So we do have that payment repayment schedule within the contract. I'd also seek the board's guidance on how many scholarships we would allow at a given time. And speaking with Dr. Fraley, he believes that if we had 10 budgeted, that is feasible for us in our, in our finances to budget for 10 on scholarship at a time. Currently, we have five on scholarship, with one beginning student teaching, I believe, this semester, and getting ready to come back to us next fall. So we would have four for next year, and then scholarships open this month for our high school kids. And so we'll collect those through the January deadline date, and then pull our group together to evaluate the scholarships, and then select those winners at that time. And then also, the last thing that we were seeking was the approval to open it and extend the scholarship opportunity to any of those DESI-certified teaching areas. Speaking again with our admin team, they all agree that the struggle is across the board in, in all areas, whether it's, you know, a core classroom or an elective classroom. Again, I think we would obviously, as a group and as a committee, be mindful of which scholarships or which areas that we awarded people scholarships to based on what we see as our future need. And of course, the, the core competency areas are of utmost importance to us, but also knowing the struggle that we've had in filling, you know, all areas. Electives, art, music, fine art, health, PE, social studies, English. All of those areas, we've had troubles, struggles with in filling the last couple of years. So if we were to open that and extend those opportunities to other areas, I think we would, again, benefit from that. So seeking the board's approval to, to add those changes and move forward with this, this program.
Okay. Do I hear a motion to approve the Grow Your Own Tiger Legacy Agreement?
I so moved.
And a second?
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Grow Your Own Tiger Legacy Agreement is open for discussion. Is there any discussion or any questions for Mr. Curry?
What kind of lead time is appropriate for deciding whether to expand or contract the program? There may be a time that things, things work out better, and you decide to contract it to just core products, but core programs, but what kind of lead time do you need?
Well, I think what we've seen over the, what we've seen over the last few years is just with the number of students, or lack thereof, of going into education at the college level, and then with the number of people moving career paths and getting out of education, has really, within the last five years, created this demand across the industry, not even, you know, not only in our state, but across the country. So I think, you know, in hindsight, I don't know. Obviously, the pandemic, I'm sure, had an impact on that as well. I know that through, through the state and through DESI, just the certifications and qualifications that they had put, placed on teachers and, and those students going into education were very high and very demanding. You look at the cost-benefit of going into public education compared to other areas and other avenues or sectors of business where you could make more money. I think that's another thing that people have looked at when evaluating whether or not to, to go into public education. So I think allowing us to reevaluate this yearly, giving us the opportunity to maybe constrict if need be, if, if things redirect and we're in a better place. Year to year, I think we could easily say it's not needed for us to budget 10 people on scholarship at a time. But I think right now, we would, if we could fill and have 10 people, we would have no problem placing them in, in our buildings in our district at this time. So I think an ongoing yearly evaluation would be sufficient and prudent as well.
Thank you.
Any other questions or discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Not in favor, nay. Stands approved. I didn't vote no, I was just saying that. Next item on the agenda is a maintenance vehicle. Dr. Fraley?
Yes, if the board would remember, back in October, I brought this to your attention to replace one of our maintenance trucks. It's an older model Chevrolet that's about to rust to pieces, to be honest with you. I went out with the RFP to our local area dealers. One, only one dealer, Rick Ball Ford, was able to verify that they could procure such a vehicle at this point in time. So Dodge and Chevrolet aren't focusing their production on, on these type of fleet vehicles. Ford still is. Rick Ball states that they can still get me that vehicle. It may be several months coming, of course. I also budget every year in the maintenance budget for a vehicle replacement in case we need that in replacement at any time.
Do I hear a motion to approve the Rick Ball Ford quote to purchase a replacement vehicle for the maintenance department? Do I hear a second?
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to purchase a replacement vehicle. Is there any discussion now?
Does Rick Ball have such a vehicle available now?
No, it would be something that would be ordered through Ford's fleet program. They're finding, finding an F-250 out there on the free market is slim and none, unless you're looking at more of a passenger vehicle. These are more of a fleet, this is a fleet model. Ford makes fleet models specifically for government entities. That's why they're so highly discounted. Your, your savings is right around $10,000 from, from what that would cost you or I to go buy that truck.
Good, good luck finding one. I would, today at Rotary, I was visiting with an administrator at, at another school in the area, and he was describing his struggles trying to find just a personal pickup truck. And fortunately, he found two at competing dealerships, and fortunately, both of them were also bright red, but, so you can guess who the administrator is. But it was, it's difficult. So good luck. Are there, can we use it? Are there any state contracts or anything we can use?
Well, that's, we're getting that, that type of fleet pricing from Ford.
Okay.
And we, we usually can, also, we, in the past, for example, we've run off the, the city's fleet contract.
Okay, all right.
Any other discussion? Questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That is approved. Dr. Fraley, you're up again.
Yes, I have some good news. The Volkswagen DNR grant that we applied for was approved this year. That was a lottery draw. So we got it approved to replace our current activities bus, which is a 1998 model. It is also, I'm afraid Mr. Jean's gonna fall through the floorboard at any point in time. Part of the stipulations of that grant was it needed to be a 2020 or newer model. It had to be diesel, biodiesel, electric, or alternative fuel. Diesel is obviously the most affordable option in that category, and it's also what we're set up for in our district. We do not necessarily have the infrastructure for charging and et cetera of electric vehicle, and they are a lot more costly. And availability is also in question on that. I'm requesting that we go ahead and approve an estimate of a Thomas-Bilt bus from Midwest Bus Sales out of Shawnee, Kansas, for a couple reasons. One, after talking to the first student managers and Ms. Connie, that Thomas-Bilt is a, a brand that they, they feel highly comfortable with, and they're also certified to work on for us. If we were to, for instance, go with a Bluebird, Bluebird sometimes has a higher cost anyway, but we would not have any local source to maintain that vehicle. Again, just like the car market, the, the school bus market is, is pretty slim pickings out there as well. Midwest happened to buy, pre-buy many buses, so they're sitting on about 10 to 15 at the time. They also said, if, you know, these will go quickly. So I, I would like to jump on that. The cost to the district after the 80% match is only $25,648. That gives us a brand-new 2022 71-passenger bus.
Okay. Do I hear a motion to approve the Volkswagen School Bus Replacement Grant from DNR? Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded. I will now open for discussion. Any questions, concerns?
I just wanna say, I think that's a, it's a blessing to the district, considering that we've got, you know, so many years out of that bus, and to be able to get a new one for $25,000, they're, I mean, that's incredible.
Yeah.
So, good job.
Any other discussion?
No.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That stands approved. Thank you, Dr. Fraley. And Dr. Fraley, again.
Okay. Also, previously, I informed the board that one of our maintenance vans this year was sideswiped on a street while it was parked by a drunk driver. Through negotiations with our insurance carrier, Midwest Public Risk, and Progressive Insurance, which was the driver's insurance, they finally, we've come up with a figure that our insurance company is willing to give us, and then they will continue to negotiate any difference from Progressive after that. We have received a payment right at $33,000 for the replacement cost of that maintenance van. After talking to Mr. Simons and looking at some things, we're, I am recommending that we go to Rick Ball and ask him for two trucks instead of trying to procure another van. And he feels that the crew cab, 3/4 ton, is a better option for our maintenance staff just from hauling purposes, and that would also give us two other trucks that are capable of running snowplows. And essentially, we're getting a brand-new Ford F-250 for a 2016 van that was totaled in the insurance accident.
Just to clarify, Dr. Fraley, two trucks, meaning one that was just previously approved, and then this one that you're asking for.
Correct. That is correct. This will be an additional pickup for the van.
Do I hear a motion to approve a vehicle replacement purchase for the maintenance truck?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve a vehicle replacement purchase for a maintenance truck with a current price of $32,042 and is open for discussion. Is there any questions, concerns for Dr. Fraley? All right. If there is none, I will, there are no objections. I will ask, all the, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That stands approved. Next are decisions, and Dr. Fraley, or no, Mr. Triplett. I'm sorry. I got used to him.
I know, you got spoiled. Okay, this is, uh, the mask mandate every 30 days or prior to that 30-day mark, the Board of Education meets to discuss, um, extending the current resolution that we have in effect, uh, for staff and students, uh, at all of our facilities when indoor. This is, uh, passed in August of this year and has been extended each month, um, since then. So, since we last met, we have had some developments, uh, in our state. We have, uh, I'll just read you our memo. Um, there was a, uh, ruling, a judgment that came out of the Circuit Court of Cole County. I have attached that into the agenda and you have access to that. I will not read that full, full order, but, uh,
Thank you.
The way I understand it, that, uh, is against the Division of Health and Senior Services and, um, as declared, it unconstitutional for that organization and the, uh, which also mandates local health authorities to implement quarantines or mandates of, of any kind, masks, face coverings, those type of things. So, um, I have also attached to this memo, Missouri State Statute 167.191 and the district, school district, Sodalia 200's policy and regulation 2860. It is our understanding, regulation 2860. It is our understanding that the current judgment out of Circuit Court of Cole County has a stay of order until December 22nd, 2021. It is also our understanding that if nothing changes within that judgment, the authority of our local public health agency to determine quarantine and isolation rules that exclude students from school will be prohibited. As stated, that judgment is against the Department of Health or Senior Services and not against public school districts in the state of Missouri. Our current mask mandate is not affected by this ruling. However, should the local health agency no longer be able to require quarantines of close contacts due to the ruling, it is my recommendation tonight to this board that the mask mandate requiring all staff, students, visitors inside of our buildings be allowed to expire effective December 22nd, 2021. It is also my recommendation that starting December 23rd, 2021, face coverings will be encouraged but not required by staff, students, or visitors. This recommendation is contingent upon no appeals or changes to the Circuit Court of Cole County judgment as it is currently written. Pursuant to RSMO 167.191 and the Sodalia School District 200 policy and regulations 2860, students afflicted with any contagious or infectious disease, and COVID-19 is a, uh, listed on the contagious and infectious disease list that is like tuberculosis or the measles or, or those type of, uh, diseases. Any student, uh, that is, uh, test positive will be excluded from school and school activities for the period of time as established by the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, the CDC, pertaining to their contagious disease, whatever that may be, COVID-19, measles, TB, et cetera. Particularly regarding COVID-19, currently the timeframe for isolation of a positive case is 10 calendar days from the onset of symptoms or positive test date. Our regulations also, uh, state that we can exclude, we do not quarantine. It's two totally different things. We only are talking about school. If we exclude a student from school, what they do outside, they can go about however they choose. That is not our, uh, area to, to control. We can only exclude from school. We also have the authority to exclude if we think that they are contagious, um, to other people as well and, and could have been infected. Again, my narrative, uh, for the last 18 to 24 months has been to keep kids in school with the, uh, working with the Pettis County Health Department. DESI, the Department of Elementary Secondary Education, has stated all along that, uh, they have asked us to work with our local health authority. That is what we did. Um, I am thankful to our local health authority. I'm thankful to Joanne Martin for the work that her folks did. Uh, I am thankful to our staff for the work they have done. Um, but my narrative all along has been that, uh, when we don't have to quarantine, uh, that that would reduce significantly the number of students that are excluded from school. So with that, I think that we can move forward and manage, um, with only positive cases having to be excluded from school. Uh, I think that we can keep the doors open. Uh, currently, prior to this meeting, I asked Mr. Curry, we have 17 individuals within our school district, staff and students that are currently positive. Out of 5,500-plus, 17 is not alarming to me. Uh, as I stated earlier, um, state statute does give school boards the directive to implement mask mandates. Um, state statute does give school board the authority to exclude students from school if infected by a contagious or infectious disease. So, moving forward again, I, I think that we can manage this. I know that, uh, you know, we currently have students that are not in school because we have a mask mandate. I would assume that if the board chooses to vote tonight to go mask optional, I would assume that we will have students that no longer attend because of that reason. So I think those are probably about the same. Um, we have had, you know, we, we hear a lot, I've had a lot of conversations both ways, and I'm sure the board has, and we hear a lot from, uh, both sides of, of the aisle on this. But I think it is, it is time, I think, with vaccines being available for ages five through, uh, adult, that everybody has the opportunity. I think especially with the timing of this, um, our last day of school for this semester is December 21st. Uh, this, this order is, uh, like I said, under a stay of order until December 22nd, so that takes us till we're out of school when our staff and students come back after the first of the year. Um, at that time, again, I would recommend that we be mask optional. Um, I, you know, I've been asked about why not do this now. Um, this ruling out of, out of Cole County, uh, judge made his ruling and it is under a 30-day, the way we understand it, under a 30-day stay. That means that our, uh, I have seen letters from the CDC that, uh, and from our local state government, uh, DHSS, telling our local health departments to continue business as usual. So therefore, I, uh, want to continue business as usual too, up until the 22nd. The appeal, if any would come, would come from the Attorney General's office. I don't know if you're familiar with our Attorney General, but he has made his opinion on this, uh, matter very clear and he is not in favor of masks. Um, so no one is expecting an appeal. Again, that being said, that doesn't give us a reason to be unethical and, and move ahead of the pace. I think December 22nd is, um, sufficient and waiting until this, uh, officially takes hold and then, starting second semester, we come back mask optional.
Do I hear a motion to approve the Board of Education resolution to wear face?
I would like to address the board briefly.
Hold on.
Hold on, I'm not there yet. Do I hear a motion, do I have a motion to approve the Board of Education resolution to wear face coverings indoors? Do I hear a second? It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education resolution to wear face coverings indoors is now open for discussion. Is there any discussion? Does any of the board members wanna say anything first?
I still feel it's kind of early and premature. Um, under five, you know, vaccines aren't available, so we're putting them at higher risk. Uh, five to 12, they've, uh, authorized the use of vaccines. Some of them may not have gotten their first one yet, but they definitely probably won't have their second by the time you do this. So puts them at risk as well. And then your older students, which are in the higher category of, uh, being affected right now, um, they haven't had a chance for their, their booster. Again, I, I hope that we somehow provide a shot clinic, vaccine clinic, available for the parents that would like their students vaccine, vaccinated, um, at the school, so it's easily available for those parents versus trying to get them to a doctor's office with, with work and everything. There still are industries that are requiring masks of the parents to be used. Um, I'm not gonna name, name them off, but there's several here in, in Sodalia as, as well. So, again, I, I feel it's premature right now to, to go this direction. You've heard me before.
Okay. Anyone else up here?
All, I would oppose to talk after we have discussion for the public.
Okay, Mr. Cox, go ahead.
Uh, as I said, I'm Stanley Cox. I just wanna, I, I appreciate the, uh, the background being laid by the, uh, by the superintendent. Uh, a couple mistakes that you made. Uh, the matter's not been stayed. It is absolutely not stayed. Uh, it is not a final judgment, that's the way things work until 30 days have elapsed, but it is still enforceable. It is the law of the state. I printed out the, uh, docket. I've got 10 copies of it. There is no stay order. There's nothing. It is in effect as of the 22nd of November. So if you proceed to ignore it, you are disobeying the order of the judge. Uh, it is correct that our great Attorney General has decided not to appeal it, has announced it publicly. So it is not going to be appealed. It is not in order presently. Uh, so therefore, not only the masking rule that has been followed, um, but also the quarantine or the, or the don't attend rule that, that has been imposed on anybody who does not have the possibility of infecting other students is also unlawful. Uh, as a result of, of this decision, uh, I would point out a couple arguments been made by the board and by the superintendent, uh, which, which are really contradictory of what he says today. Uh, it's always been said that they did that based upon the actions of the Pettis County Health Center. Um, and of course, now they say that they have some other authority, they're not gonna follow that other authority, but they've always said that, that you all were doing this because of the direction of the Pettis County Health Authority. You remember that. Um, you've also been, not only, uh, requiring students who have been, uh, who are infected with a disease, but people who have been in contact with people infected. That also is a violation, a clear violation under that case. Uh, and you, you always claimed, it was always claimed to the board, it was done because the Pettis County Health Center. Um, first of all, I, members of the Pettis County Health Center has asked the board, uh, chairman, asked the director, whether they've had any kind of orders in effect, and she says they have not had any orders in effect. So, there's never been any orders of which you claim to have been following. There's a reason for all this discussion. I'll get to it in a minute. Uh, but at any rate, uh, the, the case says that any written or oral orders are enforceable, uh, and they're null and void and, uh, and cannot be binding upon what we do in the future as of the 22nd of November. Um, also, uh, the same ruling made the determination that I mentioned before, that, uh, people who simply have been exposed to someone with the virus cannot be excluded from school. And if they are, you are, if you have people today who are excluded from school because of exposure, you are violating the law and subject to civil penalty or civil suit. Um, much of the actions that you all have taken, I hope you take this action today, except it should be immediate because it is now the law. Uh, if these, uh, if masking and regula, uh, the masking regulation and the quarantining regulation, as I understand it to have been before I arrived here today, continue to be enforced by the board, the board and this district faces serious civil liability. Certainly it's a big request.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Cox. Your three minutes are up. Thank you.
Will the speaker yield to some questions?
Certainly, Scott.
Are you disputing the ability of District 200 to require masking?
Uh, because there is no order in effect. Uh, no lawful order.
Are there state statutes that allow this board to set that?
I, I don't believe they are. They do have that authority. I, I have not researched that one, Scott. I'm sure you've spent a lot of time doing it.
We have.
And the same one allows them to, to, uh, keep students out of the school who have just simply been exposed to it, same rule. Is that right?
Correct.
I think that would be subject, I think those are subject to the same attack beyond what the General Assembly allows school districts to do.
Have you, have you looked at 167.191?
I'm old enough to have looked at every statute, Scott. Is that a question?
Seriously, have you looked at it, sir?
Uh, I'm sure I have. Not, not this week, or the last 10 days.
Do you dispute the ability of the district, uh, to exclude?
I've already disputed that, yes.
Okay.
Asked the same question three times, I answered the same way.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Are there any other comments?
I have some, I have some questions of staff, if I may. Uh, first off, how does it, MISHA had various rules about quarantines and things like that. So what, you know, how does this affect the ability of the district to, uh, participate in MISHA sanctioned competitions? I just wanna make sure you've dealt with all your ideas.
This, this will not affect it. We have other school districts across the state that don't have mask mandates. They monitor it. Uh, MISHA, we did receive a, an update, uh, shortly after this ruling came down, uh, that said they were basically stay the course, uh, despite what Mr. Cox says. That is what all of our legal attorneys have said. That is what DHSS has said, that nothing takes effect until December 22nd. And, uh, to stay the course, that has been the, the recommendation from everybody. MISHA's saying stay the course and we will provide more updates when, when available.
Yeah, and I'll just report that we also relied on our authority at MSBA about that, Kelly Hopkins.
Correct.
Not a problem.
Correct.
Uh, is there a possibility, suppose we have an outbreak at a school, how can we limit? Is there a possibility that as one of the things we do, other than excluding people from school, can we go back to mandatory masking for that school?
Absolutely, that, at, at the recommendation of the Board of Education and the passing of a mask resolution at a later date.
Okay.
We have all the legal authority, as you stated, under, uh, well, actually, that one is not 167, but, uh, 1...
Under the general policies, when you wrote up the...
Yes, correct.
All right, okay. Do you have confidence in the ability of our staff to, uh, you know, basically tell the, uh, student has the disease or, uh, or is liable to have been exposed to COVID-19?
You know, we would handle it just like we handle any other sickness. The teacher...
Like measles or anything?
Teacher, if a student is sick and asked to see the nurse, they would go to the nurse. If the teacher thought that a student was sick, uh, they would ask that student to go to the nurse. If the nurse then thought, uh, possible COVID, we could, uh, then that would be directed to the building principal and we would make a recommendation for that.
I'm, I'm just trying to, to figure out if we, if we, if we make masking optional, that we basically have, have, have an appropriate and limited response if there are infected students in there. Uh, because the last thing I wanna do is have to, is have to close down a, either a building or close down the district because of that. But that is, that is all... But that is, that is also an option.
Sure.
That's basically the last option you would use.
Oh, absolutely, that's not what we want to do at all.
You have, who would be, and this is the practical problem with this, is you have a student that either is asking to see the nurse or the, or a teacher is, and I'm assuming the teachers are going to be brought up to speed on what problems, what they should be looking for. Where do we go from here? I have a sick kid in fourth grade at Horace Mann. The teacher has said that student needs to go see the nurse, what do we do then?
Nurse analyzes the child like we would any other time.
And the parents contacted?
You know, we have current policies in place, if they have a fever over a certain degree, they go home regardless. Whether it's the flu, whether it's cold, whether it's whatever it may be, that student is excluded from school due to certain criteria that the nurse is looking for, that we already have, that we've had in place for 100 years.
I'm taking, I'm taking the contact tracing or anything like that either is dead and we're flying blind, or it never worked in the first place as far as our district. So what do we do with that student's classroom?
We send a letter to, if there's a positive in a classroom, we will send a letter to those parents saying there is, your student possibly, potentially was exposed to a COVID-19 case, please monitor your student for symptoms. If you see any sign of the symptoms, we would recommend that you reach out to your local health provider. Those kind of things.
Okay. At some point, do you, if, if that works, great, if it doesn't, what do we do then?
By, it doesn't work, what do you mean?
If, if, if kids start getting sick and they're still coming to school? Or we think that it continues?
Then they go to the nurse, and if they have a fever, they go home, if they're sick, we call the parent. And if we absolutely just think that it is COVID, then we have the authority to ask for a test, a negative test for them to return.
Okay.
I have one thing too, that I'm, in your presentation, I don't know that you mentioned the buses. The buses are under...
Federal regulations still require and mandate that masks will be in place on anybody on a school bus.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, you might have mentioned it.
I don't think I did.
Okay. So is there any other discussion or questions if?
One, okay, one of the interim things is to require masking either on an interim level just to that classroom or possibly the whole building. If it's determined that day that we need to go back to masking for that school, what do we, you know, what do we do?
We don't do anything. If we decide tonight that we do not have a mask mandate in place, then I don't have the authority to, next, whenever we come back in January 10th, the junior high school has 150 positive cases, I don't have the authority until January 24th, when we have a board meeting, I would bring back, if I deem appropriate, a resolution to mask following what we had in place prior to this.
Okay, let's, what I'm asking is, we send, we send a kid home, we have reason to believe, you know, that that child is positive, there are other people that are potentially, you know, that have potentially been exposed to that in close contact, either in that room or possibly that building. What do we do in the interim? What do we do in the interim to protect those kids?
What I said earlier, we notify parents that there's been a potential exposure and they need to monitor for symptoms and be responsible and be adults, and if their child is sick, keep them home. Just like we've done with every other illness.
All right.
Okay.
And then sanitation will stay the same, we'll continue to be...
We will continue to clean, Dr. Fraley just met before this, and we will continue to have extra cleaning and sanitation everywhere.
Do we have an adequate or sufficient supply of N95 masks? I think Mr. Stees has brought this up several times in the past. If an answer was given, I missed it, for those students and staff that do wish to continue to mask in our district, assuming this motion passes tonight?
Dr. Fraley, do you have a inventory?
On the top of my head, we've, we have ample amount of three ply masks, several hundred N95 masks on hand. I have bought, purchased those periodically through this process, basically keeping inventory numbers, getting them as they, as we need. I don't want to get to the end of this pandemic someday and have 50,000 masks in boxes, but yes, we have, we have ample amount, and I typically procure those through IBT Industries here in Sedalia, and they have thus far been able to accommodate our needs within a few days.
Plus, the kids on the bus are, who go by bus are also going to have a mask because they're going to have, have one for coming and going.
And we've been providing those to first student.
Okay, good enough, all right.
I think we got some from the audience.
Okay. Oh, I'm sorry, Deana.
I'm Deana Neal, I know several of you, and I know that you all are doing this because you care about the students and the teachers in this district. I would like to remind you that the infectivity rate of COVID right now is quite low, that the variant that's going around quite, right now is quite mild. And I know some teachers in the district who have had many more students who have vomited in their mask than have gotten COVID. And I don't see you closing down schools and threatening to make them wear a mask and quarantining children because one of their co-students puked in their mask. You're not doing it for that, you haven't done it for influenza. This right now is an equivalent of influenza. This is not a life altering pandemic that's going to kill these kids. And I would like for you to really just kind of back off. You wonder why the teachers in the district and some of the students are so downtrodden because of all this? You've got your faces covered. They play, they play their violins with their faces covered. They sing at concerts with their faces covered. They sit on the bench at basketball games with their faces covered. Come on, this is no way to live. And most of you probably don't live like this outside of here either. I know that you don't, maybe an exception here and there, but I know you don't. So let's, let's just kind of back off and quit worrying about the worst case scenario because it's not going to be any worse than flu when we had to close a school because of flu outbreak. Be a few days, they'll be better, we'll get back to business. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Hello, everyone, my name is Natalia, and two of my kids attend Horseman. And I just wanted to say from a parent's point of view and from, for many others who haven't spoken up, who are a parent like me. So I attended the concert on Thursday, and I have a five-year-old and a nine-year-old, and I didn't think that they'd have to wear a mask when they sang, but they did. And so I, you know, was really disappointed with that. But whenever I came in, I was happy to see a lot of adults sitting and not wearing the masks. But it didn't make sense to me how that didn't bother the adults in the audience where they're sitting relaxed and the poor children, you know, are trying to sing at their best and gasping for air through the masks. It's just so like unhealthy mentally and physically for them, I don't know how people just can't wake up and see that. So I know the email about, the concert did state that once you sat down, you can unmask like amongst your loved ones, but after the concert, there was a bunch of families meshing and talking without masks. So our kiddos wearing masks for the concert didn't help anything, you know, it didn't prevent anything. So I just think that like, I work in dental, so I think masks would help in a very close proximity where there's splatter involved, like when I clean a patient, that makes sense. But also at the concert, it bothered me that they actually played music where the voice was recorded and it was like a professional voice singing over the kids because they knew that the masks probably were going to muffle the voices, we had to hear our kids. So they worked so hard and we didn't even get to hear their actual voice. So I'm just thankful my kids, they sing at church in a choir where we could hear their beautiful voice, they're unmasked and they're praising God. So I'm just glad for that, but just know that God is in charge of your health and wellness, so you can do all you want with these mandates to try and help people's health, but you could fail miserably if that's where God wants to put you in your place to show you something, so just remember that. Second Chronicles 7:14, this was actually my verse of the day today, and it said, "If my people who are called by my name humble themselves and pray and seek my face and turn from their wicked ways, then I will hear from heaven and will forgive their sin and heal their land." So I think that this verse is really perfect for this meeting today. Like, just think about it, when in the history of your lifetime have you ever masked up for another airborne illness or lost a job over a vaccine? Especially with how clean things are, so I just don't understand why this illness is so special and different. Just wash your hands instead of touching your faces extra for your masks. Take a look at yourselves, you all are just really complicating your lives and our lives. I didn't get letters from my kids in school when someone had the flu, for example. I'm well educated on airborne illnesses, I went to school for dental hygiene, I've been in the, or in the dental field for 13 years. I'm just honestly embarrassed for the school board, I feel like all of this is just, at this point, just foolishness, just not really to protect our children, just too many breaches in this system, it doesn't work, guys. It seems like it's just a bunch of adults arguing about the same thing over and over when surrounding schools have dropped the silliness a long time ago.
Um, excuse me, your three minutes are up, thank you.
Which is all we want, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Was there anyone else?
Hello, everybody. Thank you for giving the opportunity to speak tonight. And I want to start off by saying, when I first came into this room, I was here long enough to where all the kids were here. And I saw all the kids leave. And I'm a pretty observant person, and, and my hearing is pretty good, still pretty good, even at 52. But what I'd like to say about that is, all these kids were here, the parents, none of the parents were complaining about their kids putting the mask down, none of the kids were complaining about wearing a mask. It seemed like the only people that were really complaining that I hear is the parents. So a few days ago, there was a finding by the Missouri State Health Department. They just released information to news sources across the state showing mask mandates save lives and prevent COVID-19 infections in Missouri's biggest cities during the worst part of Delta variant wave. The state data shows at the end of April to the end of October, jurisdictions such as St. Louis and Kansas City with mask mandates had an average of 15.8 cases per day for every 100,000 residents. On the flip side of this, it was 21.7 cases per day for residents in unmasked addresses. So when you do the math, that's almost six more cases a day. The state health director, Mr. Corov, sent an email to Governor Parsons' office saying the studies findings show effectiveness of mask mandates. Mask mandates of these communities had a lower positivity rate and a lower death rate per 100,000 residents. If the positivity rate in this county is so low, how come every day at my job, I have to wear a mask? The answer is, that's incorrect. Doctors and dentists, every day across this country, every day have to wear masks to prevent themselves from getting airborne illnesses. So if masks weren't effective in producing, reducing or preventing COVID, why the hell the doctors and dentists wear them every day? Common sense should be involved in this, just, just common sense, thank you.
Thank you. I saw one other person, there you are.
Hello, my name's Kevin Matts, appreciate you all giving us this opportunity. Just a couple of things to go over. Pettis County Health Center released their numbers today. We had an increase of 133 cases in this past week compared to 75 last week. The positivity rate is now 13%, up from 8.3% last week. The highest numbers are in the age range 55 through 59 and 13 through 18. Last week, they said there's 23 positives from birth to 18 years of age. Statewide, our hospitalization is at 521 hospitalized of COVID as compared to 593 last week. 362 are in ICU and 184 on ventilators as compared to 143 in ICU and 84 on ventilators the previous week. The counts aren't going down. U.S. Judge, U.S. District Court Judge Lee Yuckel ruled that Texas's ban on mask mandates violates the Americans with disabilities, specifically violating Title II of the Americans with Disabilities Act. Preventing schools from meeting the legal obligations not to discriminate based on the disability and from providing an equal education opportunity to students with disabilities who are at heightened risk or severe illness from COVID-19, that they could be denied from in-person learning if the mandate isn't upheld. And that's just not those students, it's our regular students as well. So these are all things to think about, is the numbers aren't going down. And as of today, Sacred Heart went back to full masking, they have been optional up till today. Today, they are now back in full mask. Thank you for the opportunity for listening.
Thank you. Any other discussion from the board?
Yeah, I just want to, I appreciate Superintendent's your, your ability to move this forward to, to actually go to a mask optional at the end of the semester. I absolutely think it's the right thing to do. As, you know, you and I've had the discussion, I believe that it should have been done, well, obviously, I wish it would have never been done. I mean, putting masks on kids, that's what I'm talking about. But ultimately, I think that, you know, we have, we have attorneys on both sides saying, no, it doesn't go into effect till the end of the month. Ultimately, this judge's ruling, when I read it, and if you read it, he says that a middle school civics class could figure out that this is unconstitutional, which I thought was interesting. So I hope our middle school, you know, constitution or civics classes could, should be taught appropriately. So ultimately, what we have is we have judicial bodies across this state that are making unconstitutional mandates, and we're saying, well, we're only going to do it after you actually push us to the very end to where we actually have to obey this. So I just, I find it discouraging, but at the same time, it's a, I think it's a win just taking these things off of our kids. Now, I heard, you know, I don't know if it's going to pass tonight or not. In fact, I would encourage all, I'd love to hear from all of you board members, like, what are your thoughts on this? Because I think that the people of Pettis County, the people of Sedalia 200 deserve to hear what their elected officials think instead of just, no, I don't want to, I don't want to rock the boat. We deserve to hear what you have to say, not just, not just, you know, a yea or a nay. The, I mean, I, I think that's, I think that's fair, and I think that, and I appreciate those who, who came here on both sides of the aisle. That's called, I mean, that's being civil, we don't have to agree with each other. And that's, I was, I received an email or an instant message from a teacher today who was in disagreement with me and said, I disagree with you, Mr. Herron. And I replied, I said, you know what? Thank you for at least reaching out and having a civil, you know, conversation. Because obviously, it hasn't been very civil. But I absolutely, I appreciate you, Mr. Triplett, in, in moving forward. I think that the question here is we have people saying, well, all right, we're going to wear these masks just so we don't have to quarantine the kids. to wear these masks just so we don't have to quarantine the kids. And if that's the case, we don't have to quarantine the kids right now according to this ruling. And I know, I know you and I disagree, Mr. Triplett, on that. But I won't keep continuing on this. I think the, I think where I'd like to, I'd really like to hear from the other board members to find out exactly where we're going to be at this, because I will tell you right now, I won't vote to extend a mask order for 30 days. I would encourage, I mean, if it's, if that's the case, I'd like to make even a separate motion where we would, we would vote to remove the mask mandate at December 22nd. I will gladly vote in favor of that. I will not vote to put a student in a mask for one more day or one more hour. So I'd like to, at this time, if you would, please, I'd love to hear from the board members who haven't, who haven't said anything yet.
My plan, I intend, after reading all the documentation and taking everything into consideration, I'm not going to say it was an easy decision. It's not going to be an easy decision, I don't think. But, you know, we've been, we've been discussing, not just us, but the world has been discussing COVID for 21 months plus. There has been, like, anytime you study science, it's a trial and error type thing. So the medical profession has had that time to see what works, discuss, redo, talk about change and change and change, and the research, scientists, all that taken into it. You know, we've come up with methods to treat these patients, we've come up with methods. If no one's heard of COVID, I don't know where you've been for 21 months, so you've been educated. There's educate, you know, and you can decide what's, you know, if wearing a mask is what works for you and your family, that's going to be your way of preventing it if you're, you know, so we've got the vaccine now, where 21 months ago, that was all just starting to be talked about. I fully intend to vote with Mr. Triplett, with his recommendation, that the mask mandate requiring all staff, students, visitors inside of our buildings will expire effective December 22nd. That I plan, my plan tonight was, is to vote for that. Anybody else want to say anything before I ask for?
Why don't you make the motion, or take the motion to accept the proposal and?
We do have that, we have a motion to approve. I have a second, is I, am I right, Lisa?
Yes.
Okay, and the next thing, after discussion, if there are no objections, the Board of Education resolution to where?
Is there, nobody, you guess, really? Barbara, you don't want to say anything?
Uh, I find it interesting that I'm always singled out. I don't know that there's a whole lot more to say except what Diana said. We have been involved in this for 21 months. We have had the opportunity for vaccinations, we have tried to see what works. Are we doing the right thing by removing this mask mandate? I don't know, but I guess we'll see. And I think it's certainly at this time, it may be time to take that chance and see. So, you know, I fully intend to vote with Mr. Triplett's recommendation to remove the mask on the 22nd of December. Yes.
Any other board members?
I'll speak, Diana.
Sure.
Matt, I think with me, it's always been, keep the kids in school, and I think we've done that. And, you know, as of right now, since they relieved, some of the states come up with the case, and they've come up with different data, and, you know, I'm planning to go with what Superintendent?
And I think that's what it's been for all of us. We felt the most important thing was to keep our students in school, and to do that, we had to have staff to keep them in school. And thank goodness, that we have done very successfully, and I feel very proud of our school district for doing that. If that becomes a problem in January, February, which we hope it won't, then I guess we can come back together and relook at the answer and see what we do then. But if right now we think we can do this, then I'm certainly willing to give it a try.
So, Diana, on this, on this resolution, this is, is this one and the same on the December?
His recommendation, Mr. Triplett's recommendation.
Okay, is there any way we could amend the recommendation to where, because I would love to vote in favor of removing masks on the 22nd, like I said. Is there any way?
That's what the recommendation is.
Yeah, but it, but it's not to continue the mask for now?
No.
Okay, good, good.
No, we still, we will remain in mask until December 22nd.
Yeah, well, that's what it says.
Is that right, Mr. Triplett?
We'll remain in mask until the 22nd.
Yes.
Right, okay.
End of semester.
I will not be voting in favor of that because I'm not going to vote to put students in mask for another, you know, so many weeks.
Okay.
Do we know how many of our teachers are vaccinated or students? Do you have any numbers there at all?
Vaccinated? No.
Again, you know, under five, they don't even have the opportunity at this point, and five to 12, they probably don't even have their second vaccine in, so.
Okay.
Skip, I'll just go ahead and say something. I don't necessarily like this plan, simply because I don't like the idea of optional masking, but this gives people fair warning. Staff, if you're not vaccinated, students who are eligible, if they are not vaccinated, and their parents want them to be vaccinated, get it done. If you think that the district's policy discriminates against students who have disabilities or are not solved by Section 504, this gives you time to do what you think is right.
Okay.
But it gives time. Thank you.
So I am asking for a roll call vote.
Can, can I? I just want to clarify.
Go ahead.
So the recommendation is that the current mask mandate expired December 22nd.
Correct.
Correct.
Okay.
So.
No, I appreciate that, Steve, because I will gladly vote in favor for it to be removed December 22nd.
But?
But I thought we, there's that caveat.
It's a package deal, is that correct? It's really kind of a package deal. So if we, if we vote to drop it December 22nd, if that fails, then I'm going to come back and ask for, to extend what we're currently doing, another 30 days. And if that would fail, my first recommendation would fail, then I would have to assume that this board is going to vote to extend that again.
Right.
So I'm not telling you how to vote.
No, I appreciate that, Steve, and I'll tell, I will tell the taxpayers, the patrons of this community, I will vote in favor of this because I could not live with myself with this failing, because I will do anything I can to get these masks off these kids, I want to see their smiling faces.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that we were on the same page.
Absolutely, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
So December 22nd?
I need someone to make a motion.
We've got that, and it's been seconded, and so basically, I need a roll call vote, how they're going to vote that the mask mandate will end December 22nd.
Okay, Kenny Kopfelt?
Yes.
Scott Gardner?
Aye.
Matthew Herron?
Aye.
Sam Kimpton?
Aye.
Michael Stees?
No.
Barbara Schrader is an aye. Diana Nichols?
Yes. So the vote passes 6 to 1, and that will, the mask mandate will end December 22nd. Next item on the board, on the agenda, is the board meeting schedule. Mr. Triplett?
Therefore, we don't need to, I guess we could make a motion or we could remove it. We need to make a motion and then it needs to not pass because we can go back to our original board schedule, next scheduled board meeting would be January 24th.
January 24th?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so do I hear a motion to approve that the next board meeting will be January 24th, and then we will go to follow the original board schedule that was put into place earlier this year? Do I have that motion?
Still moved.
Second? Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. It has been moved in second, that the board meeting schedule has changed to where the next meeting will be January 24th, and then we'll follow the schedule. Do I have any discussion, questions, comments? If not, we will stand that the board meeting schedule be approved. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? And moving to discussion, which is the Dr. Fraley, the fencing?
Yes, at a previous meeting, after we had an incident at the junior high school where mentally ill man made his way to our kitchen and cafeteria, the FEMA building, we discussed fencing around the junior high to try to better secure that area, that campus, one, two, you know, traffic flow of the kids, and then, of course, especially to keep any potential intruders to, wouldn't absolutely 100% prevent that, but it would be an impediment to that. We went out and just kind of got a verbal estimate of where we think that price would be. The cost is, based on linear distance, would be about approximately $70,000. So I just wanted to bring that up to the Board of Education. If we feel we want to move forward with fencing that, then we would go out and do a bid process. But it's a significant amount of money, of course, to spend, and that's for a decorative type of fence, six feet high, depending on which gates, automatic gates, automatic locks, we have to work, coordinate with Night Watch, our security company, for reader access and et cetera, to some of those areas.
Question, is the fence going to be inside or outside of the sidewalk?
Well, it would be the front sidewalk along 50. We would have to work with the city to determine, I have not determined if that right-of-way would exist yet, you know, if that has to be a right-of-way, or if that is, would be our property in particular.
The problem with that is that the right-of-way on 50 is screwy. I'll just say that from being city councillor, and, you know, the way that the right-of-way was done on Highway 50 was just screwy as hell. Is that a legal lawyer term? Screw. Just want to make sure we're being professional here.
What, another option to do that, Mr. Gardner?
I'm sorry.
Another option that we've, we've discussed is to bring that fence in front of the old gymnasium and on the outside of the concrete, and then follow that sidewalk out to Massachusetts, which would leave that sidewalk open.
The problem is, whenever I'm, you know, every Monday, I go down to Versailles, and every Monday that there's a gym class out there, they're using that sidewalk.
Correct. That would be a change.
Okay.
Now, I always get the name wrong, but the company that we had come in and do some training for us for school incidents?
Stratago.
Stratagos. They work with a lot of schools across the country. Would it be beneficial to get their opinions on the best design or layout of that fence for quick evacuation if something did occur within that fence, that we could get individuals out?
I think that's a great idea.
I don't think that would hurt a thing, no.
Yeah, I don't think anybody has thought of that, so I think that's a great idea, Mr. Stees.
I appreciate Mr. Herron's comment several board meetings ago, if I remember correctly, that he doesn't want it to look like a prison, and neither do I. $70,000 is a lot of money, and that's by no means a hit on Mr. Dyer because he does a good job at what he does. Are we going to get multiple quotes? Obviously, it needs to be secure, that's the main concern, but what are the options here? I mean, are we going to get several layouts? And maybe that changes when we get the input that Mr. Stees requested, but?
It was, it was my intention with this amount of expenditure that we would put out a bid package.
Okay. The other?
Oh, Paulson Miller?
Architectural?
Yeah.
They could.
They're not aware of that.
Yeah, we haven't, yeah, we haven't discussed that with them, but it's something that I'm sure they could give us some information about.
Talking about, and there was, and I will tell you, after our discussion last time, several people in the community reached out with the same concern, just, you know, saying, hey, this is a historical building, we don't want it feeling like a prison, and, you know, and I'd love to have a discussion with our, with our security staff and so forth. You know, I've always heard that we need another, that we would, that we might need another person, another body at the junior high for security. Would we be better off getting another person, or better off putting in the fence, or both? I don't know what the answer there is. I don't know if it'd be a better investment of our funds to hire someone or to put up a fence.
The difference, you know, just from a purely financial standpoint?
Absolutely. Fence is cheaper.
Yeah.
Yeah, long-term.
$100,000 one-time expense versus $50,000 a year, basically. But I do know, I have not spoken to Sheriff Andrews at all, I know the previous Sheriff Bond was more than, you know, willing to, you know, add an additional SRO, I know that Chief Work in Sedalia PD would also entertain that idea as well, if we wanted to go that direction.
That's some good ideas, suggestions, yeah.
I mean, I would encourage you to have that conversation with our security team, then, of course, with Stratagos even, to figure out what, what would be the best plan of attack there, you know?
It's truly a double-edged sword, you know, we all look at the aesthetics and how that looks to the public, but, you know, just Michigan again, I mean, there's always, you know, and everybody just is shocked that it happened here, and we just don't ever want anything like that to happen in our, in our facilities, and with the location of that building, it, just over the years, we have had, we've had issues, so just trying to, trying to be proactive. On 50, it's going to depend on where that, on where that, whether it's, whether the fence is going to be on the other side, on the north of the sidewalk or south of it. But if, if kids are still using that sidewalk and the fence is north of it, you could put a low, you know, a nice low decorative fence on that side, provided that a car can't, or a car or a truck can't smash through it, and that would work just fine. The Sarah Cotton House, I believe, had an iron fence around it. It would, it probably looks like the fence that's around the Herd Memorial Clubhouse right now. You don't need the spiky things on top of it, obviously, but as long as it's able to withstand a car or a truck trying literally to smash and grab, I think it would be okay. Getting an extra officer or something out there during that time, I don't think would work. The other area, we talked to the Stratagos people, they got real concerned about the, at MSBA, they got real concerned about the Katy Trail, and the fact that you have a publicly used trail right next to the school.
And that's, you know, that's something that we may want to consider, the whole idea is to try to, you know, impede someone who, like the incident that happened earlier this year, just happened, becoming a earlier this year, just happened to be coming across our campus. Could be that we look at putting some type, I think we should only put some type of fencing along the Katy Trail, no matter what, so, just to keep the easy access off that trail.
I will tell you that, you know, during temperate to warm weather, there are usually, there are usually people, I don't know unless or what, that are sleeping on the benches that are along the Katy Trail. I've seen that too many times, and there are people there, so I think you need to be prepared for something like that.
Dr. Fraley, when we was up at Kansas City at that last MSBA meeting, we had the Stratos lady that checked the junior high, and that was the biggest concern she had was the Katy Trail. She said that definitely need to have something down there. Well, may I suggest that I go ahead and reach out and contact her again?
Definitely.
I'll have her come down. We can, you know, pay her a consultant fee to give us a little further guidance on that particular project to start with.
Because they may have some vendors that they could recommend working with.
Okay.
Yeah, maybe we could get two prices, one for just the trail, and then, of course, on the outside.
Yeah, the price is based, basically, according to Guyer, no matter who we get, would be based on a linear, linear distance, so.
We have a meeting that wants to address something that Mr. Stees said during the last portion.
I'm sorry, we've moved ahead on the agenda. That's okay. Yeah.
I'm leaving the table.
On the table, yes, please.
So, I know about the case, but he did say some very disturbing things, and if you won't be meeting until January 24th again, I think there's some information in this book that will be helpful, so you don't replace vaccines on campus with masks.
Thank you.
Don't go down that route.
Thank you. We'll move on. Mr. Norton, I think you have the next portion of our agenda.
I have Ms. Ashley Burris with me tonight from our guidance counseling office, and we bring before you our new-named Course and Student Resource Guide for the 2223 school year. There's a couple of things that I want to bring to your attention, and then I will take any questions that you might have. In the Student Resource Guide, pages 1 through 19, a couple of things we'd like to point out. We will be starting a new program called the Tiger Roadrunner Express, where we are working hand-in-hand with State Fair Community College to give the students a more real-world feeling, taking dual-credit courses, as we will be sending students to campus, to State Fair Community College's campus, to take the dual-credit courses. So, we will be trying, we will still have some in-person courses, dual-credit courses here on campus, but the majority of students that go to State Fair will take those courses during first and second hour out at State Fair. We will provide busing to and from, and they would be able to take those classes in a more college-like setting with other college students. Also, within the Student Resource Guide is the Workforce Ready Tigers. This is a program that we hope to put in place that would start with a class of 2025, when they are juniors and seniors. We feel it's important to take care of all our students, being if they are looking to go to a vocational school, the military, a four-year college, a community college, and also students who are ready to join the workforce right out of high school. We want to make for sure that we meet their needs and meet our community needs. And after meeting with our Economic Development Office, some plant managers, we are going to form and write a new curriculum that we will bring before you at some point during this upcoming school year, which will allow our students to work hand-in-hand while earning high school credit within the local workforce, while they're juniors and seniors, and be prepared to go directly to the workforce, or based on their work with those companies, the companies could pay for them to go to college, to trade schools, to get more certifications. So, we know that some students are not excited about being at school from 8:00 to 3:00, and they would rather just get their hands dirty and get to work, and we feel that we can write curriculum that will meet the needs of a 24-credit high school graduation, along with having them work. So, we think this will meet a need for our students and also for our community. So, look forward to seeing that on there, but that would not start until.
Excellent.
Our freshmen, our juniors.
That's great.
Within the course listing and guide, oh, I'm sorry, to take you back real quick, articulated credit, there is a section in there on articulated credit. We found out today that we have some misinformation, and we are meeting with State Fair Community College, and I will update the board when this comes back for approval, to make for sure that we have the right statement in there of how the articulated credit is awarded, and we just found that out today. So, I will have that fixed for your approval and decision next month. In the departments, things to look at, there are a lot of changes, but I'll just bring some of them to your attention. In our engineering and biomedical department, you'll notice that we have removed several of our PLTW courses. As you know, with PLTW in engineering, they have to take the intra-level IED course, then they would move on to the POE, Principles of Engineering course. Then it goes in 17 different directions, and it's very hard for those courses to make, and it's very hard for a student to be able to try to get into all those programs. So, Mr. Wright and Mr. Walters have removed those PLTW courses and introduced engineering, design, and development. Those students can take it, it's a semester, oh, it's a year-long course, those students can take that, and they can work on those individual project engineering-based problems, with not having the project lead the way, but it'll be more real-world experience, and multiple students can be going. Some student could be working on aerospace, while another student is working on a manufacturing issue for a local company. So, it just makes it more generalized, so Mr. Wright can have several students in the same hour. For, in the business and marketing, business and marketing has looked to do a major overhaul, just to make for sure that they're meeting the needs of the students going into that area. And so, there is some name changes, there is some removal of courses that are no longer relevant to the student body. And there is a course, that I apologize, that did not make it on the book, but we will be bringing to you. It is Entrepreneurship. It is an upper-level course for 10 through 12th graders within the business department that will be in the planning guide. I apologize that it didn't make it there. I'm going to read you the description that will go inside the book. This class is not going to be your normal lecture and note-taking. It is going to be a project-based course. You will be able to learn about running a business through hands-on activities. You will be creating a city block of businesses by designing the outside of the businesses, as well the layouts and all the required work that it would take to start that business. So, the students will be entrepreneurs as they're building this imaginary city within the course. Yes?
Couple of questions. Number one, will you be, will you be allowing members of the community to talk on, to come in? For instance, the equivalent course at State Fair is the Launch U program. Is this going to be, if this is going to be similar to that, I've been talking to them about, you know, business structure for years, and I'm sure you can get other people in the community to come in on their specific areas.
Our CTE, one of their requirements is to have the community members and businesses come into the school in the spring, and that's going to be something, they're going to be talking to the businesses.
Wonderful.
And I think more community involvement and getting input from the community will be a big piece of that. So, I will make for sure that Ms. Howard, Mr. Carr, Mr. Frenell look at inviting you in to be part of that possibly.
It doesn't just have to be me, please. This is not about me, this is about the kids. Thank you.
With what I pointed out and all the other information, are there any questions?
Sounds great.
No, sounds like some good additions and changes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Norton.
And next is information. We have some donations. Dr. Fraley, you want to talk about the first one?
Yeah, thank you. Just want to recognize that Sedalia Family Center Farm and Home Store, located where Kmart used to be, called us up a little while ago, a couple of weeks ago, and had a pallet of disinfectant wipes that they wanted to donate to the district, and I want to thank them and that store manager for their generosity in that.
Okay, thank you. And you have the next one, too.
Yes, we were very fortunate enough, last year, if you recall, we applied for the Patterson Family Foundation Grant, and we were awarded that grant. They offered that again this year. I applied for it, and we were once again offered the grant in the amount of $25,000 to help offset pandemic-related costs.
Very nice.
I will apologize, the Patterson family, is that the Cerner?
Cerner, yes.
Gotcha, okay.
And Mr. Pyle?
Yes, I'd like to continue to talk about some positive things, happy things as well. Our team would like to extend a special thank you to the Sedalia Lions Club, donating $150 plus, would like computer glasses for our students. Sedalia Lions Club is dedicated to the needs of our community. We're fortunate to have their support for our students and their families.
Yes, very nice, thank you.
Thank you.
And you have the next one as well, Mr. Pyle.
Yes, our Sedalia School District Team would like to extend a special thank you to Interstate Studio and Publishing Company for their generous donations. They donated $750 to our community of disturbed students who are not currently living in their homes. This donation will make a positive difference for our students in need. We're particularly thankful to businesses and organizations like Interstate for what they do for our community, and they seek out opportunities for kind of support and care.
Yes, they do. Thank you. And the last one is yours as well.
Yes, our Sedalia School District Team would like to extend a special thank you in sincere appreciation for our 40 professional paramedics and EMTs of Fettus County Local 5229. The group donated $500 to adopted families for Christmas. A member of that local, they decided that they would also like to match that $500 group donation to become another $500 donor to honor a second family on their own. The group worked closely with our social worker team and completed the shopping for the families themselves. They want to provide that blessing on their own. And again, we just continue to appreciate the community and groups like these that truly seek out opportunities for kind of care and support for our students.
Yes, we are definitely blessed. Okay, that concludes tonight's meeting. Kenny, if you will make the motion to adjourn to close the executive session?
Make a motion to close the meeting pursuant to Section 610-021, one legal, three personnel, six personnel identifiable student records, 13 protected records, and 14 records protected from disclosure by law of Missouri statutes.
And Barbara, the roll call vote.
Kenny Kofelt?
Aye.
Scott Gardner?
Aye.
Matthew Heron?
Aye.
Sam Kimpton?
Aye.
Michael Stees?
Aye.
Barbara Schrader?
Aye.
Diana Nichols?
Aye. The meeting is adjourned, thank you.
Would we not like?